I'd like to bring to order the September 25th meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Perry?
Present.
Counselor Shabbett?
Present.
Counselor Ryan?
Present.
Counselor Hilton?
Present.
Counselor DiMediris?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor LaBeau?
Yep.
All present.
Consent agenda. Approval of the regular session meeting minutes of August 15th. No executive session. Counselor Edwards abstained, absent. Approval of the regular session meeting minutes of September 11th, 2017. No executive session. Approval of the executive session meeting minutes of August 28th, 2017. Approval of the special meeting minutes of September 7th, 2017. Counselor Edwards abstained, absent. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Charter Review Commission Two, Conservation Commission, Economic Development Commission, Harbor and Coastal Water Management Commission, and the Prevention Coalition. Correspondence received and filed, there are none. Approval of the tax assessor abatements, there are none. Town administrator authorization to proceed with advertising and procedure for hiring a police chief. Town administrator requests approval of RFP for real estate legal service to assist Open Space and Land Preservation Commission with acquisition of open space and conservation land. Review by Brian James. Denise Surratt, town treasurer, budget and review reports for August 2017. Would anybody like to take anything off the consent agenda? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So votes.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. There are no public hearings. Town, um, open forum announcements, comments, questions, and presentation. Larry Cook, member of the Rolling Thunder. Presentation to the town of POW MIA honor chair to be displayed at the library. Where's the chair? Oh.
Good evening, Madam President, fellow councilman, town administrator. Uh, my name's Larry Cook. I'm a member of the Rolling Thunder Organization, which is a nationwide organization. And our main mission in life is to keep people in the know and wanting to know where are our missing fellow servicemen, our POWs, MIA's. Rolling Thunder started about 1987 with a couple of gentlemen, Vietnam vets, sitting around talking and worrying about all the people we have missing. At this time, we've had like 10,000 sightings of live prisoners and stuff. And our government wasn't doing anything. So the following year, 1988, we had our first demonstration in Washington DC on Memorial Day, which we still do. At that time, maybe 2,500 bikes rolled into town and we had a procession. Last year, over 900,000 bikes come into town from all over the country. We want people to know we have people missing. Since World War I, we still have over 82,000 people missing in wars. And we need to find them. We need to get them back with our intelligence today. We should be able to do it. The name Rolling Thunder kind of derived from 1965, the B-52 bombing strikes over Vietnam as they carpet bombed and our motorcycles when we fire them all up, 900,000. It sounds like rolling thunder. And that's what we're looking for. We're looking for confirmation. We want people to know we have people missing. We want them back. And last year, if you was reading the Newport paper, the Monroe family in Newport, they received information their son was found. 1951, he was shot down as B-50, B-29 over North Korea. 65 years later, they returned him. He got his honorary burial, military. He deserved it. His family deserved it. Now they know where their son is and their uncles. We put these chairs up quite a few places. State House has them. Fenway Park, Foxborough, Gillette Stadium have them. Town halls all over the place. Portsmouth, Middletown have them. Ponte Ganson Middle School, North Providence. They're everywhere. We're trying to get them more and more. And I always wondered, you know, we give you a chair. We put it up. We put a couple of flags next to it. We have an anonymous donor who donated the POW American flag so that the library, they can put it up. I always wondered, what happens after we do this? So in Portsmouth, I come back a couple of months later and I'm putting up stanchions in a red rope so nobody will sit on our chair. And when I went in, there was a lady reading the inscription on it. Wow, somebody's looking. And the VFW also put in a missing man table. And they go right together with our honorable wall. And then she's looking at it. So I go upstairs, I talk to somebody in the finance office. I come back down and I take a couple of pictures. And another lady comes up and she tells me how much it means to her when she sees this. Her dad's still missing in Vietnam. So I guess it does good. So what we need to do after we see these things is call you guys up. Have you guys call our representatives and senators, Jack Reed, anybody, and keep them going. Because there are just too many families. When they sit down next month, Thanksgiving, they don't know where their relatives are. That's pretty much most of it. I've got enlisted representatives, called Dennis Canario, John Edwards, Senator Palmer, James 70, Walter Flag, Senator Reed. You guys, call them and let them know. And on a more personal note, my friend in Maine, excuse me, was just notified by the government to give him his DNA. His uncle in World War II, they think they found him. Keep it up. Madam President, if you would do the honors and unveil our chair. I don't know if you can read it. Says, "You're not forgotten. Since World War I, there's 82,000 soldiers still unaccounted for. This unoccupied chair is dedicated to the memory of those brave men and women and their sacrifices while made serving our country. Town of Tiverton." Thank you. I hope you guys. Thank you. I hope you guys will be as proud of that chair to have it and look at it in the library. People come and see it as we are to give it to you. And that's it. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
There are no further open forum items. Town Councils sitting as a board of licensing. John Manchester, Tiverton Historical Society, and Herbert Little, Rhode Island, I'm sorry, Tiverton Run and Gun Club, 1529 Fish Road. Request approval for Class F1 one-day liquor license on October 14th, 2016, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Approval of special event, speakeasy, on October 14th, 2016, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. 2017. Mr., uh, I think Mr. Manchester's present. Elsie Huck.
Hello.
Hi, John.
We're just gonna have a speakeasy at the gun club. And, um, it's gonna be on here, the vodka and rum running and that there. So basically, that's what it is.
Any questions from the council?
Are you really gonna have Charleston lessons?
Probably, I think some of them can do it.
I was guaranteed that.
Not me. You. We're gonna wait you to do it.
Any other questions? I'd like to entertain a motion for a Class F1 one-day liquor license on October 14th, 2017, from 6:00 to 10:00, to John Manchester and the Tiverton Historical Society.
So votes. Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
I can't. He's my cousin.
I can't see you over there.
One of 10,000.
601. I already signed the document, John. You're good.
And Nancy, do we have to approve the special event speakeasy?
When it's more than 100 people, I like to have the council approve it. I have the authority, but it's better for the council.
Madam President? Make a motion to approve the special event speakeasy on October 14th, 2017, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
Motion to main and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, John. Good luck.
Thank you.
Appointments and resignations. Budget Committee. Applications to date. Three vacancies to next general election, November 2018. Michael Dakotas was previously interviewed. Jennifer Jocelyn previously interviewed. John Perkins previously interviewed. David Paul, 175 Warren Avenue. New request. Welcome, David.
Thank you, Brown.
Could you tell us a little bit about yourself? Why you're interested in the Budget Committee? And what you have to offer us on the Budget Committee?
My name is David Paul. I'm a resident of the town of Tiverton since 2008. I've got a wife and three children, two in the school system, one that graduated recently. My interest in town actually goes back to my volunteering in town as the HeartSafe Community Coordinator. Also, Tiverton Little League as a coach and a manager, as well as the Tiverton Little League Safety Officer. Volunteerism in general goes back to 1995. But I have a deep interest in the town and a good love for the town, if you want to call it that. So I wish to continue to serve in this capacity here on the Budget Committee.
Have you been to any Budget Committee meetings?
I have attended Budget Committee meetings. Anything that I have not attended physically, I have watched faithfully on YouTube. That's my quiet time at home.
And you are currently also a firefighter for the town of Barrington?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Yes.
Mr. Paul, if you would mind, just describe some, I guess, relevant budget experience. I don't know if you have any or experience with budgeting process.
As far as experience goes, anything formal, educational-wise, honestly, no. My experience with budgeting goes back to actually my volunteer time with the town of Barrington as a volunteer firefighter. I went up through the ranks, up to captain. And I was involved in the last five years as a volunteer with the budgeting process for that volunteer fire company.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, David.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next applicant is Carolyn Wyman, 26 Ronnie Street. New request? Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, same question. Tell us a little bit about yourself. What interests you in the Budget Committee?
I have lived in Tiverton since 1998. And this past year, I started coming to some of the Budget Committee meetings. And like the previous gentleman, watched some on YouTube. And I, I don't represent any one group. I value education. I value libraries. I value public safety and administration. And I really did believe that the Budget Committee tried to do the best of looking at what they were given. I just wish that, um, people in the room could have had more questions answered. I think there's got to be a way to get public input and have the committee do its job. I know it's a weighty job to review all of it. But I am interested. I have had some experience now being on the Casino Subcommittee. And I guess people that know me from that, I show up at meetings. I do my homework. I read what is appropriate for background material and try to learn how best to get things going in town that benefit the majority of the people.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam President? Sorry.
I was going to escape.
Almost. Just the last question, as I've asked everybody else. Can you describe any experience you had with the budgeting process?
Yeah, I had been on the school committee for five or six years. And obviously did, we reviewed the whole budget every year. I also had been president of condo association in Florida and very active, obviously, in doing budgeting for, I think, what we were a 537 unit. We were pretty large and budgeting was an important process that we took very seriously. So I've had some experience.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Can you tell us where the school committee was that you served on?
Awigo, Appalachian School District in upstate New York.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Now, we could handle this two ways. We could do the appointments in two weeks. Or we could waive our policy and do the appointments this evening. What is your choice?
Madam President? Is the, um, is the, uh, what application is closed? Okay. I don't have a conference.
If we waive our policy, I'll need a motion.
Madam President? As you know, we do have a little bit of a project going on to review our board and commission policies. And I'm not entirely sure that we've always sort of followed these things to the letter. But having recently just read them, Counselor Perry and I actually sat down for a meeting to go through all of them. Given that it is the standard policy and that I don't think, since there aren't any Budget Committee meetings that start till January, it might be good to adhere to the written policy, which is to wait, give counselors time to consider everything they've heard and make our appointments. If it were, you know, time critical, I might feel differently. But having just read the policies, I think it would be best if we adhere to them.
Any other discussion? So with that being said, we'll put it on the next agenda, which is October... Oh.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we do that, if this is the policy that we're gonna adopt now today, it's gonna have to go from this point forward. So we can't pick and choose when we decide to waive and not waive. So if we're gonna go by policy from this point forward, it has to be policy all the time. We agree with that?
Randy, sometimes we waive it if we have like three openings and only one person that's applied.
Right, but I understand it. But tonight, there was really no reason to waive it. All these folks came out. But I understand if you want to go by policy, I'll go by policy right along with you. It's either we go by policy or we make it up as we go along.
As I was reading, to waive a policy, you have to have a two-thirds vote anyway. So, so if anybody ever made the motion to waive the policy, I'd put it out there as a, as a motion. And we'd have to get two-thirds approval anyway if we were doing it. Thank you all for coming. We'll be appointing October 10th. But thank you for applying. Resignations. Peter M. Monis, Captain Circle. Resignation as planning board member as of September 13th, 2017. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Peter's resignation with regret and thank him for all his service he's done to the town. For the town.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Unfinished business. Historical Cemetery Commission regarding tax abatement for property owners with historical cemetery on their property. There is a letter in the packet. My understanding is the historical commission decided to forfeit their request.
That's correct. This was previously tabled. They did some more research and they've decided that tabling it was the right thing to do.
And no action needs to be taken.
That's correct.
Financial business. Counselor President DiMediris requests authorization to spend up to $1,000 from the council contingency for Charter Review Commission videotaping of meetings. Town administration's recommendation. I believe Paul agrees to take 1,000 out of contingency. Is that correct?
That's correct. Does it not say that?
Well, it does, but I wasn't sure that people were clear on it. $1,000 won't cover all the meetings, but I've talked to Rob Coulter and it'll cover the important ones at the end when they're making major decisions and people can get educated on what they're doing. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the $1,000 for the taping of the Charter Review Commission?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
Madam President? Out of curiosity, did Chairman Coulter indicate how much money it would cost to do all the meetings?
Well, it's $50 a taping.
That would pretty much cover it. Now, whether or not they tape all their meetings, this would just be offering the funds to cover it. It'd be their decision as to whether they tape or not.
I encourage they do. And I think a lot of people agree that they really should because it's a really important decision. People need to make...
I'll let them know the funds have been appropriated.
And I've had conversations with Mr. Coulter and he is for taping the meetings. So I think it will happen.
So just to be clear, so $1,000 will cover from this point forward?
Well, Nancy...
Everything?
It costs us $50 a meeting. So it should cover till May-June.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Five-two. Police Chief Blakie requests approval of transfers for new hires totaling $53,000 from account number 33305108 longevity to account number 3305101 salaries of $16,000. Account number 33305150 sick leave buyback to account 33305101 salaries for $13,000. Account 33305150 sick leave buyback to account 22515268 health active for $7,000. Account 33307199 psychological testing to account 22505365 social security 2500. Account 33306928 state education to account 21905268 health active for $10,000. Account number 33306640 vehicles, parts, and maintenance to account 21905268 health active for 4,500. Chief Blakie.
Madam President, if I may. Just for context, in the letter that Chief Blakie had drafted for getting approval to hire the five officers, he laid out this reallocation of funds to be able to pay for not only the salaries incurred by the extra two officers, but their health benefits as well. So just context, this is just following up with moving the money around so that it's all taken care of.
Chief Blakie, anything to add?
Mr. McGreevy and I, and as well as the treasurer, went over the figures. There may be some adjustments in the future here. But this is pretty solid numbers and I feel confident that we can make that without too much effort.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Counselor Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfers for new hires totaling 53,000 as outlined from the accounts per Chief Blakie.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Police Chief Blakie requests approval for a purchase of a 2011 Ford four-by-four pickup truck from sole-source distributor using drug forfeiture funds.
That's correct. With my letter, my backup information, particularly over the last six, last three weeks, we've been very, we've been short on cruisers. We did give up a car last spring. And a lot of it's due to the details. We are getting a lot of money in from some of that, as you can tell, which is a good thing. We have needed a truck for quite a while. We're using a private vehicle from the mechanic, which is a major no-no. We can have it as a responsibility. And for choosing our sign, picking up our oil barrels, et cetera. This vehicle would be marked. It would have police letters, lettering on it. It would have overhead lights. It would be equipped with radio equipment. It would be used basically, it'd be good for storms, bringing out horses. It has a multipurpose, including the speed sign, et cetera. So I think it's applicable to the police department. And we would not be unique to be the only police department who has such a vehicle. And I think we could put it to good use. We have the account. We have the money. I just recently returned $6,400 on top of the $49,000 we have in there. I've just replied for 49, for $6,400 back from the Burn Jag grant, which we're getting reimbursed and which go back into our drug account, which we use to pay for tasers.
Now, I have 56274 at present in that account. So it probably... Now, I have a question about this account. I was reading about it. And we can't supplement anything that we already have budgeted, but we can supplant the department budget. So...
It's to, it's to supplement, not supplant. In other words, we just can't...
Right, 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 right. I'm just...
I have those moments as well.
Um, so just keep this in mind for any future things you may need that we might be able to purchase before the new budget comes out.
I did speak with Mr. McGreevy today about a grant that's applicable and it could be beneficial to the town.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Madam President? I'd like to make a motion to approve Chief Blakie the purchase of a 2011 Ford four-by-four pickup truck from sole-source distributor using drug forfeiture funds. Second.
I have a motion in second. Any questions?
Madam President, I have a question for the chief.
Counselor Hilton?
So this comes fully out of the forfeiture account. There's no match. There's no copay. There's no...
Nothing.
It's totally covered.
It's actually, I'm getting it for between $4,500 and $4,700 blue book cost.
Very good.
And it's 42,000 miles. It's, um...
It's a nice truck.
When Chief Blakie retires, he's gonna become a car salesman, I think.
Let me make you a deal.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. New business. Town solicitor. Approval of the stormwater operation and maintenance agreement with Tiverton BTS Retail LLC. LLC.
So this is the Dollar General that was recently approved, went before the planning board for an advisory recommendation and development plan review. And it also went in front of the zoning board for some relief there. In an ordinary course, if this was a land development that required approval from the planning board rather than merely a recommendation, they'd get this type of agreement approved there. Since it's just a recommendation, we need approval from the council to make sure that this agreement is binding and enforceable. Essentially, this is a development in the watershed protection overlay district. This stormwater facility maintenance agreement, this is the site of the Ranger School, they're going to install a stormwater treatment facility and this agreement will allow the town to monitor, enter the property if there's an issue and maintain if there's an issue. So it gives the town some enforcement power.
Any questions from the council? Counselor Hilton?
I have a question. Was this plan reviewed by our engineer or by... Bill's nodding his head. May I ask the DPW director some questions?
Sure. Bill, could you come up, please?
Madam President, is this legal for her to ask him a question?
Yes.
Every time I tried to ask a question of somebody in the audience, I was always thrown, "No, you can't do that. You can't do that." So if it's right for one, it has to be right for everybody.
Correct. And according to Robert's rules, if I give the permission to do so, it can happen. Is that correct?
The council policy is that the council president can recognize members of the audience...
Audience.
...add their questions. So the procedure would be ask the president, the president calls them up and recognizes and questions can be...
Well, I got no'd, so this is a big pile of crap, just so. I want to put it on the record.
Counselor Hilton?
Given this property's location in the watershed, did, I'm guessing you reviewed this?
I reviewed the entire drainage design for that.
Okay.
And that was what was one of my recommendations for, for the properties. One of the things that's lacking in the town is the fact that we review these properties and then no one files and puts the necessary documents in the records. So that's a standard, it's actually the DEM. DEM created a standard maintenance agreement contract that just gives us, gives the town access to go in and say, if you don't do what you're supposed to do, then we have the right to inspect it and then do something and backcharge you for the services.
And are you pretty comfortable, given this property's location next to the pond, that...
Yeah, they've actually put the correct systems in that they needed to, and I just wanted to make sure that that was put into the records.
Excellent. Thank you. And I have one other question for the solicitor. Peter, I realize that the design review thing is, is a recommendation, so the planning board couldn't have necessarily approved this, but given how important documents like this are, especially in places like the watershed, are we missing something somewhere that this is either not being required before they go to the zoning board for approval? I mean, it's a little weird that it's coming. I understand why we're approving it.
Madam President, point of order.
Counselor Hilton has the floor and she's asking the solicitor a question. It is allowed.
Are we missing something in the process where this ends up in front of us? Or is this just such a one-off situation that...
So I think, you know, it is, it's unique in the sense that it's not coming under the land development or subdivision regulation review where the majority of your applications are going to come in. I think if, the procedure that council could take is either to amend the DPR ordinance to build that in and delegate, either have the form and refer to the form and say, this form shall be part of any DPR approval or the watershed protection overlay district ordinance, including that. And that way, anybody that comes in would have to be part of that. But I'd say in this case, the developer put in a sort of a large stormwater facility that maybe not every applicant would, since any project, many, almost all projects in the watershed district would require approval. So if someone was putting an addition on their house, they probably wouldn't put in this type of stormwater facility. The Dollar General taking a lot that had a significant amount of impervious surface and having a large commercial facility there, it was more appropriate for that. But it is something that could be considered by the council.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Madam President?
Counselor Edwards?
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor, is this a design that they volunteered or was this the result of the planning board telling them this is what they would have to put in?
So I wasn't at the planning board, but I was at the zoning board. And my, my impression was that they had their engineers, they had their environmental experts, and they put together this design saying, this is what's appropriate for this site. And the review bodies, the planning board said, and maybe Bill has more insight from being at the planning board, but...
If I could just add to this. So since coming on board, what I've trying to do is bring the stormwater regulations that the state has into basically all the residential commercial properties. So whenever you goes to the planning board, I'm reviewing it for stormwater and things like that. When it comes into Neil or goes through the development plan reviews, I'm also reviewing it for stormwater and making sure that whatever they're, whatever they're proposing on the site works with the stormwater design manual that DEM's put out. And again, if it's a commercial property or if it's of a property of a complex nature on a system, then I'm trying to make sure that there's a maintenance agreement in place so that we're not stuck with dealing with it at a later date.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor LeBeau?
Everything that's being said here right now should have been done and said and stamped before this stuff comes in front of us. We're sitting here discussing a plan that's, we're ready to approve. Obviously, it's been through Bill. Planning couldn't get their hands on it, thank God. And then it's, it's not the time or place for this. This document came to us ready for these people to get over there and get started. This is the stuff that has to stop in this town. My opinion. I'm done. Thank you.
Madam President?
Counselor Edwards?
In light of Counselor LeBeau's statement, I would like to move passage and approval of the stormwater operation and maintenance agreement with Tiverton BTS Retail LLC.
Second.
Motion's...
Madam President?
Yeah?
I just have one question. Who would normally sign this type of document?
I did notice.
It's approved as the form. Actually, we could put a signature. Ordinarily, it would just be approved as the form recorded, if you recorded the land development approval process or something like that. But in this instance, I think it'd be appropriate to add a signature block.
Yeah, here you...
In this instance, I think it would be appropriate to add a signature block for the council president and have a signature by the president.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just a kind of a point of clarification to bring this in. It's the unique case of this, not necessarily this only Dollar General, but a commercial property that did not get an approval from the planning board or the zoning board. Someone needs to approve it on behalf of the town. And regardless of who you authorized to sign it, there needs to be a vote by the town to say that this is, this is approved. Because it wasn't the planning board and it wasn't the zoning board. Thank you.
So I have a motion on the floor. I have a second. Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Counselor LeBeau?
Can I speak to Bill?
Sure.
Bill?
Would the DPW director come up, please?
Is this all set?
It was reviewed, yes.
It's planned. Is it going to work in your view?
Yes.
There's no problems?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Madam President?
Counselor Edwards?
In light of the solicitor's comments, I'd like to amend my motion to include a signature block for the town council president.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Recreation Commission requests authorization to hold the 30th annual Halloween trunk-or-treat event at the Town Library Parking Lot, 34 Roosevelt Avenue, on October 28th from 5:45 to 7:00 p.m. and request waiver, request to waive permit fee for trunk-or-treat. Is anyone here from the recreation department? I think it's pretty self-explanatory, anyway.
Madam President?
Counselor Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Recreation Commission to hold the 30th annual Halloween trunk-or-treat event at the Tiverton Town Library Parking Lot, 34 Roosevelt Avenue, on October 28th from 5:45 to 7:00 p.m. and waive the permit fee for the trunk-or-treat.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Bids and requests for proposals. DPW Director William Anderson requests approval of bid contract award for the rehabilitation of old Stone Bridge abutment. Project to John, I'm going to slaughter this, Rocio. incorporation of Smithfield, Rhode Island for an amount not to exceed $1,781,833.45. Stone Bridge abutment ad hoc, subcommittee recommendation. Bill?
Thank you. I'm actually here tonight, I was, well, let me start this off. I am here tonight to request approval. However, something came in at 5:45 tonight from VHB, the designer. That puts me at a little unease of maybe asking that this be postponed until the next meeting. They've, they've written a letter that I would like to have the solicitor review, which kind of disturbs me a little bit. So I'd like to have him, I'm going to pull this, if I ask, I can pull this from the agenda and have this solicitor review and then get back, go back on the next meeting.
I like a motion to table this request.
Second.
Make a motion?
No, I like a motion.
I thought you said I make a motion.
No.
Madam President, I make a motion to table this request.
Second.
Any further dis...
Continue.
Continuing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Town administrator announcements?
Thank you, Madam President. First, in your package, you'll see that we'll be having flu shots at the fire department at 85 Main, number Station 2 on October 12th, 11 to 1. I also see there's little flyers around the town in addition to that. Secondly, wanted to give you an update on both the office LED programs as well as Prism. I can give you Prism tonight. That's the light, the light pole changes throughout town. I'll have that for you next week or next time. But for the LED in the offices, we're pretty much through with the exception of Station 2, which is, they've done some preliminary work there, but they haven't finished or actually started to do the inside. So we're pretty much worked our way through replacing all the lights in all the town buildings, with the exception of Station 2. And if I may, there's one added thing I want to add at the request of Chief Blakey. Actually, a kudos to Officer Kirk Ripke, who received statewide recognition from the Rhode Island chapter of the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Mad. Officer Ripke, along with seven other officers and three state troopers from the department across the state, were honored as DUI heroes recently for their outstanding enforcement efforts to prevent drunk and impaired driving facility fatalities within Rhode Island. Officers of the Tiverton Police Force during the last year, which just ended September 20th, made 137 DUI arrests. Officer Ripke did 70 of those, over 50% of them. So I want to thank, commend Officer Ripke and thank Chief Blakey, wherever you might be, for bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Anything further? No?
No, Madam President?
Council announcements? Anyone?
Madam President?
Counselor Edwards?
Just a request for DPW Director Anderson, since he's coming back at the next council meeting, would he also be able to provide an update on the Grinnell's Beach project? Thank you.
Any other council announcements? Town solicitor announcements? Town clerk items and announcements? Counselor Edwards?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session. Town Solicitor litigation 4246-5A2 quarterly litigation report, including land use issues.
I like a second?
Second.
Counsel Perry?
Second, yes.
All right, I'm taking a vote. All those in favor? Counsel Perry?
Yes.
Counsel Shabid? Chris?
Yes.
Counsel Hilton?
Yes.
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 And continuing in closed executive session. Town Administrator Collective Bargaining 4246-5A2 IBPO compensatory time.
Second, yes.
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 Are we going into the second one? The third one?
I got a crush on it.
No, we're not.
All right, we're now in executive session. This is a record.